Xander the Great conquered Palestine in 333 BCE. So it was a pretty early set of wisdom teachings. And as you may or may not know, when manuscripts are translated from one language to another, the translator may use what we call borrowed words or loan words from the other language that they were used to. And in this case, it's written in Hebrew, but there are borrowed Persian words and not Greek, not so much Greek, which comes a little later in the biblical series that we're considering. Now, Cahillith is-
Martha, can you repeat the book where we are in? Is it Ecclesiastes?
Ecclesiastes.
Okay, good.
If you're looking in either a Protestant Bible or a Catholic Bible or a Jewish Bible, you will find Ecclesiastes, though it may be listed as Cahillith in the Jewish Bible. Now, what's important to know is that Cahillith is different from the books we've already considered. If you think about Psalms, if you think about particularly Proverbs, if you think about Baruch, all of these have kind of a solution for things that are difficult, that might go wrong. If you're a good man, you will do this. If you're not a good man, you will do that, and you will pay the consequences. And in the long run, the good man will be rewarded, is kind of the sense you get of these other wisdom books. Now Cahillith is considered a little bit subversive to that idea. It challenges the proverb maxims that maybe things don't always come out like you think they should. It is what Robert Alter describes as an exploration of experience. And it is an exploration of experience, and it refers to the fact that there may not be a set of values that are universal or that will apply in all situations. Now, you all are familiar with KGB Bible phrase, vanity of vanities, all is vanity. And that phrase is one that can give us an example of the nuances of the Hebrew language. Because what Alter says is that vanity of vanities is not wrong, but that it's only one aspect of what the Hebrew word actually means. It has to do with several things. Some translations have used the word futility or absurdity of absurdity. And Alter says they are not wrong, but each is too restricted. He says, "I propose, in keeping with the kind of inner logic of the ancient Hebrew language." And he felt that the author of Cahillith would have used concrete images rather than these abstractions, such as vanity or absurdity. Those are abstractions. Hebrew language in general has a preference for concrete, literal language. So Robert Alter translates it as breath, all is mere breath. I attended a seminar that he did at one of the local Jewish temples back in 2009, when he was just coming out with a book of his wisdom translations and interpretations. And this was how he explained it, that the Hebrew means breath or vapor coming out of your mouth that's invisible except on a cold windy day, and then it immediately dissipates. So this is a concrete metaphor. And this, I think, captures much of Ecclesiastes, or Cahillith if you prefer, of what this book is about. It is attempting to explore our experience. The term vanity of vanities, he says, it infers a lack of value, but not vanity meaning self-admiration. It could mean futility, absurdity, but he captures it with breath, all is mere breath. So that is one of the most important principles, I think, of understanding or beginning to read the book of Ecclesiastes. It's only 12 chapters long, so it's not a long book. And in your handout, I've listed several other phrases coming from Ecclesiastes with the citations, so you can go read them on your own. Vanity of vanities, nothing new under the sun, what cannot be changed, for everything there is a season. And we heard that in church yesterday, there is a season. One thing that's important to note about this literature is that it infers a cyclical nature of reality. It is not a linear, logical, modern understanding of time. Everything recycles, occurs over and over. Nature itself is recurrent. It is fleeting in duration, and death levels everything. We all come to the same end. One of the phrases that I like in chapter 118, he basically says, "He who adds wisdom adds pain." In other words, the more you understand, it's going to be painful, and isn't that the truth? So he uses the metaphor of breath. He has two different words from the Hebrew meaning breath. There's havil, which is basically a waste product. And then there is a word that some of you will know from our other studies, ruach, meaning life breath. And he contrasts the flimsy, waste breath with the life breath. So I encourage you to read the book of Ecclesiastes. And I'll just read a couple of short excerpts, and we'll move on because we have so much to do tonight. I'm reading from chapter 3, verses 11 through 15. He says, "I recognize that whatever God does will endure forever. There is no adding to it or taking from it. Thus has God done that he may be revered. What now is has already been. What is to be already is, and God restores what would otherwise be displaced." It is a lot to wrap your brain around. And you can see that it is subversive compared to Proverbs, the nice tidy little sayings, either this or that, it turned out for good. And Cahillith doesn't promise that. He in some respects challenges the Proverbs interpretation of the world. It's not going to necessarily be a happy ever after. And now we move on to Job, which takes this even a step further. Job is a protest against hardened, dogmatic convictions that require our experience to conform to any preconceived patterns of morality. It also protests what we see in Proverbs. He sees, Alter sees Proverbs as having closed off the chance to learn from new experience. Job, in his own case, narrowed his focus, and what he focused on was himself naturally and the human race, what we would term an anthropocentric perspective, a people-centered perspective. And the book of Job rebuts that position too. It ain't about you, it ain't about me. Creation in Job ends with the monsters that are unvanquished and God admiring them in splendid poetry, but they are under God's leash even though they terrify us. But there's no guarantee that evil will not befall us. So the God of Job celebrates each act and product of his creation for itself as an independent value. But in the book of Job, we should notice a few things that are interesting. I wrote myself some scribbles here. As we said, it challenges that righteousness is rewarded. It challenges man being at the center. The characters in Job are Monephies, but they are not Israelites. So there's a difference there. It's a more universalist perspective. There's the adversary in An-god, both of which challenge Job. Now, in this book, it was written about the 5th to 6th centuries BCE, and it has a fair number of Aramaic borrowed phrases in it. So the language in it helps us know about when it was written, because Aramaic was just coming in as the daily language for Hebrew speakers at that point. Now, they think that the three friends who challenged Job in all his misery, that he lost everything, they think that the three friends debate was added later, that it probably wasn't in the earliest versions. The three friends depict a theology of the book of Job. And Job is challenged by these three so-called friends to think about why he's lost everything. And one of the things they say to him is, "You must have somehow sinned for all these bad things to happen to you, but it is not paid back from a vicious tyrannical God." Remember that Jesus challenged that concept too. Jesus was asked, "Who sinned to make this person handicap, the man himself or his parents?" And Jesus said, "Neither had sinned," but that the glory of God would be shown. And in Job, the world is centered in God, not centered in man. And so the assumptions of the three friends are that Job must have made a mistake and screwed up somehow. And Job says, "Well, I didn't, and I'm going to trust God for how this turns out." There's a hymn to wisdom contrary to conventional moral view, and the Lord in the parole wind, we may think of as the nature of reality. God restored Job with what he lost after he prayed for his three friends who misled him in a lot of ways. When Job answered, asked God, "Why all this happened?", Job tells God, "I know you can do everything. Nothing you propose is beyond you. You said to me, 'Who is that that obscures my design without knowledge?'" Indeed, I, Job, spoke without understanding of things beyond me, which I did not know. You said, "Hear now, and I will speak. I will do the questioning, and you will respond." And Job says, "And I have heard of you by the hearing of the ears, but now my eye sees you. Therefore I retract..." And this is Job 42, 2 through 6. The word could be retract, recant, relent, despise myself, recant, repent. And in this case, our friend Robert Alter suggests, "Disown what I have said and repent in dust and ashes." Now, remember in that time, to show sorrow for a wrong decision, you might put on ashes or certain clothing. And so that's the costume of a lamentor or complainer. Job gives that up. He says, "I disown what I've said." God comes out of the parole wind and gives, tells Job, "How can you complain when you don't even know what led to how a creation is put together? You just can't know all those things. And there is not a reason for you to feel that you have been overlooked or that I have not heard you." It's really worth reading this book. And God tells the three friends, "They should offer a holocaust, that is a burnt offering, and let my servant Job pray for you. For his prayer I will accept, not to punish you severely. For you have not spoken rightly concerning me, as has my servant Job. And the Lord accepted the intercession of Job." Notice that it was after Job prayed for his friends who misled him that the Lord restored prosperity to Job. And there's one little highlight that doesn't connect necessarily to anything, but I can't resist saying it. He had seven more sons and three more daughters, and the daughters are named, and they were given property rights. The sons are not mentioned by name. I don't know how that slipped in, but I love it. I absolutely love it. So when we are in a place where we can't understand what's going on or why it's happening, and we feel that we're somehow being punished, no, no, that is not the case. Remember, at the beginning of the study, we talked about chaos and that order comes out of chaos. When we're in chaos, we don't see the order, but the order will emerge. That's the nature of reality. And this, in a sense, is to give us a way of thinking about how the ancients understood that, and we can learn a lot from them. Now, I'm going to move on to Syroch, which is also known as Ecclesiasticus, not to be confused with Ecclesiastes, which is in all of our Bibles, whether we're Jewish, Protestant or Catholic. But Syroch is not in all of these Bibles. We know only who wrote this book and the time in which it was written, which is very rare in biblical literature. It was written between 200 and 175 BCE, and then it was translated from Hebrew into Greek about 132 BCE by the author's grandson. Now, it would not have been accepted into the Jewish canon because it was not in Hebrew. But in the last century, with Qumran and other places, several manuscripts have been discovered that contain about two-thirds of the Hebrew, which agrees substantially with the Greek version we had. It was not in the Hebrew Bible after the first century, and it was not accepted by Protestants, but it's been considered canonical in the Roman Catholic Church, and we in the ecumenical Catholic Church use it in our church liturgy too. This is a point in time where it's moving from Hebrew-Aramaic into Greek, that the wisdom of Israel and the surrounding cultures was spreading, and each generation was having to comprehend it kind of new. In Syroch, it's a very good story, worth your time to read. It, in a sense, is more traditional, but going against the traditional, almost like Cahillith and Job. It was not written, it was not written like Proverbs. And we have a few sections that I picked out for you to look at. And it is very important that the law of Moses was very important as a continuing inheritance for the community of Jacob. And all this is true of the book of the Most High's Covenant, the law which Moses commanded us as an inheritance for the community of Jacob. It overflows like the Pishan, which is a river, with wisdom, like the tigress in the days of the New Fruits. It runs over like the Euphrates with understanding, like the Jordan at harvest time. It sparkles like the Nile with knowledge, like the Gihon at vintage time. And Syroch says, "The first man never finished comprehending wisdom, nor will the last succeed in fathoming her. For deeper than the sea are her thoughts, her counsels, than the great abyss. Now I, like a rivulet from her stream, channeling the waters into a garden, said to myself, 'I will water my plants; my flower bed I will drench.' And suddenly this rivulet of mine became a river, and this stream of mine a sea. Thus do I send my teaching forth, shining like the dawn, to become known afar off. Thus do I pour out instruction like prophecy, and bestow it on generations to come." Now, it is thought that this book was a book of instruction for young men. It doesn't necessarily treat women in it too well, because at that point in time, very few women had the opportunity to study with a mentor. These young men were being guided and were in schools where they were taught wisdom. But we women were managing the fires at home, and we were responsible for worship at home, as the Israelite women did. But nevertheless, despite its bias, there is some beauty here to be found. Now, I'm going to read you one verse from Syroch 24:18. And for those of you who are Christians, it will remind you of something that you have heard before. "Come to me, all you that yearn for me, and be filled with my fruits. You will remember me as sweeter than honey, better to have the honeycomb. He who eats of me will hunger still; he who drinks of me will thirst for more. He who obeys me will not be put to shame; he who serves me will never fail." Compare that with Matthew 11:28. "Come to me, all you who labor and are burdened, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn from me. You will find rest for yourself, for my yoke is easy and my burden is light." Or in John 6:35 and 37, "I am the bread of life; whoever comes to me will never hunger." Remember, Syroch said, "You would come and you would still hunger." And Jesus says, "Whoever comes to me will never hunger. And whoever believes in me will never thirst. I will not reject anyone who comes to me." So this is just a very short sampling of Syroch, another ancient wisdom book. In all of these wisdom is described as a female character and is revered. In Syroch, he has more use for lady wisdom than he does for actual ladies, as you will see if you read the whole book. So Syroch didn't have to be perfect, and neither- and neither do we, to benefit from reading him. Now, I want to give you a little bit about this week's meditation and prayers. And for the first time, I'm giving you guys a little bit of homework because otherwise, we won't get to cover this important book. And it will be important in our last two sessions. So, in this week's meditation and prayers, I've given you a passage, short, short passage from Ecclesiastes from Job in Syroch. And I've written prayers. I encourage you to write your own or to speak your own. Those were what came to me when I first studied and tried to use these words as a form of meditation to pray from. And I think that you may find them useful. Give it a shot. There are three of them, and you have a week. And it'll take you 10 minutes for each one of them at most. Now, here's your home study though. I want you to sample the Book of Wisdom. It is an actual book, and it's sometimes called Wisdom of Solomon because people attribute it to Solomon. Now, it was written more recently than the other books we've talked about, about 100 years before the coming of Jesus. And we don't know who the author was, but he was a member of the Alexandrian Jewish community in Egypt. And he's writing in Greek, but it was a style that was similar to Hebrew verse. And he places his words in the mouth of King Solomon to make them important. So, there are three passages that I give you to think about. Read them. They're just so exquisitely beautiful. I love his five-fold metaphor of wisdom. She is a breath of the power of God and a pure emanation of the glory of God. She is a reflection of eternal light, a spotless mirror of the working of God, and an image of His goodness. It is just spectacular. And you will get more of the poetic aspect of it if you use Robert Alter's version, as we mentioned before. He's really my come-to version in terms of how the Hebrew might best be translated and interpreted. So, would you do that this week? Use the three meditations. And then, there are three little samples from the Book of Wisdom. And I'm going to give you a test next week, okay? Oh, no, I have to, I have to put a little heat on you, hoping that you guys will go do that and make use of that. And as we've said over and over, we can only briefly highlight the beauty of these. You will get so much more if you'll take the time to read these ancient manuscripts for yourself. And the ancients argued about the same things we argue about. You know, is there one way or another? Or is it more nebulous, more ambiguous? What is the end of it all? And I like what Robert Alter says. He says, in response to wisdom adding pain, "It is on the road to good." And he says that it is a situation where at least our consciousness, our awareness of who we are, in the light of who we experience God to be, we can discover in these passages. It is splendid poetry. And it does not guarantee that no evil will befall us. But these ancient thinkers tell us that we can be more aware, that we can live righteously, and even if things don't turn out the way we expect, we have an exploration of our experience, and we can believe in the righteousness we have sought, even if we don't achieve full understanding. So, I'm going to stop there for tonight. I do ask, as always, any of you who can go to the St. Matthew Ecumenical Catholic Church, Yeti, what is the website? Matthew-
No, Saint-dash-
Saint spelled out. Okay. W-W-W dot, Saint spelled out, not the S-T abbreviation. S-A-I-N-T dash Matthew dot org. And there is a button there for donate. Whatever you can afford will help us. We're in a world of need at this point at the church. Our bills go on, even if we can't do everything in the normal way. I encourage you to come and see our Mass on Sunday morning at 9:30. If you didn't see the one yesterday, for all souls, it was beautiful. Go back and look at that. And of course, you're all invited to our Children's Sunshine Club on Saturday mornings at 11 o'clock, where you can see Yeti and me, and sometimes Deacon Tammy and Birdie make complete fools of ourselves. And we have such a good time. And it's a challenge to explain things on a level that's meaningful for kids. But we do our best, and we do our best to give them a good time. And there are a lot of adults attending. Perhaps they think it's better than going to Mass. I don't know. But anyway, if you can donate, we bless you and thank you. And we will be back here at 7 o'clock next Monday night. We have, let's see, five, we're at session five, six, and seven. Is that right, Yeti?
We are now on four.
We're on four now.
Next week, five.
We have three more weeks. After that, we stop for a bit, we go into Advent. And we will be having a new study in January that I'll tell you about when we get closer to time. But I loved you guys. I'm so glad that you joined us. And we pray for your well-being and your love for your family and those around you. Lord, keep you safe from all that's going on. And God, please help us through this election. Help us not to have a heart attack before this is over. So, I have to add that. We're all in tenderhooks over this. So, we pray for our nation, and we pray for you. So, my dear friends, thank you for coming, and God bless you, and hope we see you next week. If you didn't get the handout, it is on the Facebook-